R T C, take your seats.
Good evening, everyone.
New Year.
Happy New Year to you all. You sound really excited. It's 2020. Alright, so this meeting for the regular Butler County Board of Education, we should leave this call to order. And I will ask if you would stand with me, please, for the Pledge of Allegiance and a moment of silence.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, you may be seated.
If y'all read, I know we just took a moment of silence. Please remember Ms. Jane Harden's family and your thoughts and your prayers. She passed away this week. Do you not know how many countless decades? And yes, decades that she was... Teacher doesn't sum it up, or educator. She was a very, very special person. And I don't know how many hundreds, many, many hundreds of kids she taught. Kindergarten, eight years. That last part of our primary education program, she retired last month. My family, I know Jane forever, she's taught my nieces and my daughter. She retired briefly, and she thought she wanted to be retired. Then she realized she couldn't stand it, so she went back and lived in the office at the apartment that she went to write the book. Retired last month, I thought this was just her second time. So if you would just keep your thoughts in there, she has touched so many lives in our community. I appreciate it, thanks.
Thank you, and she is being finalized on tomorrow. Service will be held at the Woodland Heights Methodist Church in Woodland Drive. Okay, at this time, we welcome our new superintendent, let's give him a round. At his first official duty as superintendent, we're gonna ask if you would establish a quorum.
Bill, Ms. Linda Hamilton.
Present.
Mr. Michael Emmer.
Here.
Ms. Lois Robinson.
Here.
Mr. Randy Sellers.
Here.
Mr. Danny Jones.
President.
And I believe Mr. James Hamilton is also present in the back. I have bestest, we have a quorum.
Thank you. We have a full quorum, so we will proceed with the approval of the agenda.
Madam President, I recommend you approve of the jan- of the agenda from the January sixteenth thousand twenty, regular meeting as presented.
We have a recommendation from the superintendent for approval of the agenda, may I have a motion, please?
Motion, sir.
We have a motion and a second for approval of the agenda, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose's nay. Thank you, the agenda has been approved. At this time, we need to approve the contract for our new superintendent, Mr. Joseph Ireland. May I have a motion for approval of the contract?
I'll make a motion, approve the contract of Mr. Joseph Ireland as our new superintendent of Kinsco.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second to approve the contract as presented. And we also, okay, so the contract is approved, but then, I don't know if I said it or not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose's nay. And we also need approval for the board president, which would be to sign the contract as well as to retroactively take that date to January first, 2020, so that Mr. Ireland can get paid for the units that he's doing.
I'll make that motion now.
Okay, so Ms. Hamilton is making a motion that the president signed the contract and that Mr.-
Retroactive.
Yes.
Mr. Joseph Ireland.
Yes, it is retroactive to January first, so all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
No. We got a motion, maybe we have a second. Okay, alright, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose's nay. There are no opposes, so at this time, you have a contract in place, retroactive to January first.
Thank you.
Mr. Ireland, you are officially paid here. Alright, next item on the agenda is the approval of our minutes and payroll.
I recommend for a little minutes and payroll for the November twenty-first, two thousand nineteen, regular meeting and the December tenth, two thousand nineteen, special meeting.
And we have a recommendation for approval of the November twenty-first and December tenth. Regular and special meetings, may I have a motion?
Motion, sir.
Can I have a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose's nay. Ayes have it, minutes and payroll are approved. At this time, we will have recognitions, Mr. Ireland.
Alright, it's always a great opportunity and a great pleasure to be able to recognize individuals in our school system, not only our staff members, but also our students, especially, because after all, that is why we are here, that those, these are the individuals who we serve and that we work for each day, so. But we have a couple of recognitions tonight. Colonel Allen Hester, could you come up forward, please? And Sergeant Reginald Williams. Most of you don't have the pleasure that I have of going through our high school, especially in the afternoons, but also throughout the day, to watch these gentlemen mentor and coach, they are truly coaches. I mean, we know they're, you know, wearing the shields and wearing the badges and wearing the honor pins and so forth, but they're truly coaches, and if you watch and listen them, they're every bit as much of a coach as any head coach on the sidelines of our football field. And these guys and girls respond beautifully. So first, I want to recognize Colonel Allen Hester for exceeding expectations promoting student achievement in the J R T C program in the Butler County School System. And then Sergeant Reginald Williams for exceeding expectations and promoting student achievement in J R T C program in the Butler County Board of Education and School System. Let y'all go after Ms. Robinson. We have, for those of you who do not know, also, these young ladies and young men were chosen, there are ninety units across the United States chosen to compete in a drill competition in Virginia later this year. Our cadets were one of only two across the state of Alabama. It's just, it's a tremendous honor, and I'm so, so thankful for your service each day and for what you do each day to make your own lives better, but to bring honor to our armed forces and to bring honor to our school system. So we are so happy for you, one more time. And we're gonna, since they are here, you know, they're here for a reason. We're excited to see a little bit of their drill performance that they're preparing for when they do get to Virginia, and let me add this, is they're, you know, getting, you know, the army, this is a huge expense as well. It's about a fourteen thousand dollar, I believe, endeavor, an expense, the army is shucking out about nine thousand dollars, maybe a little more, toward their travel, their food, their lodging, but it's not covering all of that, they're a little more than two thousand dollars shy of having the money that they need. So of course, I'm gonna be beating the bushes in our community, among our civic groups, asking for their support, and it shouldn't, I shouldn't have to tug very hard, because your group's very worthy of assistance to get to where you're going, so, you know, that's not gonna be a problem, it's gonna happen. The last thing you have to worry about is having the money and having a place to sleep. We'll make certain that happens, so I'm gonna ask if you will conduct business.
Sure.
Alright, Cameron and Ezra, welcome to the deck. And so what we're gonna do is we're gonna, we're gonna assemble over here, and so, Ryan, your squad, on your feet, your squad. Okay, so you just go to port arms and just follow to your squad location. Okay, next squad on your feet. Okay, port arms, follow to your squad, follow around, okay. Okay, and last squad, now just gonna need to make your way out.
For those of you that don't know, the drill team is comprised of thirteen individuals, therefore you see more people, more cadets in the building. So we're just like A and B teams, we have an A and B team as well, and of course, not everybody can be on the field at the same time, so. Please recognize those that are still seated as well, if you will, and commend those.
Order, arms. In station, arms. Ready, port, arms. Order, arms. Just right, rest. Ready, front, three, rest. Two, up, sit, jump. Fifty, count, nay, arms. Right, face. Front, read, count, out.
One, two, three, four.
Close, arch. Forward, arch. Left, face. Left step, arch, two, out. Left, face. Right step, arch, two, out. Forward, face. Forward, arms. Left, face. Back step, arch.
Sir, Cadets of the Breville High School Titan Titan Exhibition Team, requesting your permission to utilize your exhibition team into performance, sir. Thank you, sir.
Up, face. Two steps forward, march. Up, face. Order, arms. Dress right, dress. Ready, front, forward, arms. Mark time, march. Jump, march. Three, face. One, two, arms. Order, arms. Forward, arms. Ready, spin. Queen, salute. Right, so, arms. Right, face. Forward, march. Count, count, march. Seven rounds of talk.
Thank you all so very much, well done, well done.
Another premier organization. Alright, so we go in from a group to a single, so we, you know, it takes a lot of money to run a school system. State Department doesn't send enough, federal government doesn't send enough, although they're not short on issuing mandates of what you must do. Special education's always been an unfunded mandate, or one that's never been funded, even up to fifty percent of the required funding. We haven't reached that even yet, and it's two thousand twenty. Gifted Ed, a great program, critical to our students, is another program that is also underfunded, as usual, and we rely on the state to, you know, build us up, pump us up, but still, it's not enough. We're always looking for additional monies to assist our children. Ms. Brown, Lori Brown, if you will come up, Lori. Ms. Lori's our Gifted Ed teacher for the district, and she's been very, very great at advocating for her students who are in the gifted program, but she is also a great advocate and a voice at the state level and federal level, where she has completed applications, written grants, and I believe this is number two, right? Her second grant, she got one her first year on staff, and now her second grant, and this one was awarded for a little over eighteen, I believe, a little bit, almost nineteen thousand dollars. That goes a long way. You know, it doesn't fill all the gaps, but that goes a long way and offers a lot of opportunities for our children that otherwise they would not have. So Ms. Brown, thank you so much for you and what you do for our children, I'll let you talk just a minute about-
Good evening, everybody, I promise I won't take up much time. But I can still remember, I got the email from Brandy, actually, telling me that we actually got it, and when I read it the first time, I just kind of froze, and I was like, are you kidding me? And so I kept reading it, and I think I read it about four or five times. Well, then tears started coming to my eyes, and I'm in front of my gifted kids, and they're like, Ms. Brown, are you okay? I'm like, yeah, this is a good cry, I said, I'm fine. So just that emotion that came over me when that happened, because that's why I did this, I did it for them, that's who it's for, it's not for me, it's not for y'all, it's for the kids in this county that we serve. But just to tell you a little bit about the grant itself. The grant that I wrote is going to go to put makerspace in the classroom. A makerspace is an area designated in a classroom that contains tools and components allowing students to enter the space with an idea, so they have a thought in mind, they haven't made anything yet, but once they come out of the makerspace, it may be several days, it may be several weeks with the same project, but once they come out, they will have a finished project with the makerspace. The makerspace is designed to be communal, in other words, they work together. It is to work together, to learn, to collaborate with one another, not to just be an individual project. Makerspaces allow students the opportunity to explore, to create new things, or improve on something that's already been made. Some of the items that will be purchased through this grant are various Lego activities, if you don't know already, kids love Legos. And there are actually some very high-end Lego activities for gifted education. Also, some cublets which are robotics-related, and then multiple creative supplies. I had the most fun looking up different things, like a Kurion melter, never heard of it in my life, it may have been around forever, but I've never heard of it. So that was pretty cool. In addition to the thirteen thousand nine hundred dollars that was allotted for the materials, there is five thousand dollars for a field trip slash guest speaker, whichever one that I can get to come, either I can get somebody or we can go somewhere, I haven't decided they get, that's five thousand dollars that will go towards that for this year, for this grant. This grant is actually a yearly grant, so I have the opportunity to apply for it again next year, and I'm already thinking about new things for next year, but I'm just excited that they get the opportunity to have the makerspaces in classrooms, and I can't wait to get working with them. Thank y'all so much.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. Also, as you probably noticed, of course, all of the gifts have been cut away, this is- January, January is board appreciation month. I want to say that I know firsthand, after working with this group for the last, well, for nearly three years, the work that they do is enormous, and the work that they do is very, very much thought out. They're not haphazard about decisions. They are steadfast in making certain that everything that should be done and could be done for the children of our county is done. And so often, their jobs, like most political jobs, are so unappreciated. So I want you to know from Joe Ireland, how much I appreciate you, my former role and in the current role. Obviously, we very much appreciate it. I did see all the gifts, and principals, thank you for recognizing our board members for the hard work that they do. They don't get enough thanks, and they certainly don't get enough pay for what they do, because their job is very difficult, and there's a lot of uneasy and unrestful nights over decisions that have to be made, so I want to say that I thank you very much, I want to give you each just a certificate of appreciation, Ms. Hamilton, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Mr. Emmer.
Thank you.
Ms. Robinson. And I'm telling anybody, you're in the wrong order and you have the wrong address, so, you know, I told everybody I would be brief, and I am gonna be brief. First, I just want to say thank you for the warm receptions that I've, you know, received in my short time of being on the job, it's been amazing. And I just, I'm excited about this period of service and this time that God's given me to serve children. And I've made it to two schools in regards to making a total walkthrough of the schools into every classroom so far. And, you know, it's difficult, I'm thinking, I gotta get in better shape. But it's hard to make it there and do all of the other things that you have to do, but it's a blessing to do that, because you get to see the excitement in those children's eyes, and they want to know about you, they ask questions. So I believe, as a teacher, I believe that I should ask questions, so the first thing that I ask each classroom is, as I entered their classroom, was to tell me or give me the definition of a servant. Some of them had exact answers, some of them are a little, you know, off in their definitions and their thoughts, but I assure them and I want to assure the community, the school community and the Butler County community, that my leadership style is servant-hood, that's what I do. I'm here to serve children, and I'm here to serve at the pleasure of this board, and I'm here to serve this community in the best way that I can, as I told our children. Each morning, when I have, you know, the great fortune of awakening, the first thing that I do is say thank you, God, for the day that you've just put in front of me. And as I'm stumbling my way to our bathroom to get ready for the day, my first thought and prayer is, God, help me be a better servant today. So that's kind of what I perceive as my job, is about service. And I tell the children, it's my job to make certain that they have the resources that they need, the things that they need and the things that they want to become better learners, lifelong learners, and to achieve at a great level. I told them, my wish for them was that while they were with us, that they are healthy, that they become very wise, and as a result of good health and being wise, they become wealthy. So healthy, wealthy, and wise, and make, you know, the children often said it with me. That's kind of my wish, it was my wish as a principal and certainly my wish as a superintendent. It's been an emotional week, the loss of a child is very difficult. We lost little Levi, so I ask you to continue to lift up Levi Bush family and that whole McKenzie family of teachers and staff members, they're mourning, they're still mourning and grieving, as we all are. Losing Ms. Betty Gregory, former longtime band director and instructor at Georgia Anna School, a great loss. And of course, the most recent, Ms. Jane Harden, who was a gift from God, and so loved, and her legacy will live for a very, very long time. I know that Ms. Carol, first, you know, firsthand person who's worked with her for, off and on for, I don't know how many, exactly how many years, but she's been a teacher and mentor to many a young person during her time here, so we want to continue to lift up that family. So, my last thing, a little green color I wanted to give to each board member. Green, right? Sorry, didn't turn my back, you know, I said bad thing, I always. Just one little bit of goodies that we all need. If you will look at that chart down at the bottom, and I thank Ms. Rita Bafane for bringing that forward to us, we talked about it today, and we celebrated it today in staff meeting. If you will look on this chart, you can see individual schools, but what I want you to focus on is Butler County School System, which is your fourth block under nineteen, two thousand nineteen, two thousand, uh, twenty twenty report card. Butler County School System has a ninety-four point zero five percent graduation rate. That's enormous, especially when you look over the longitudinal data that you have in front of you. It's been a decade, over a decade, since we've been here. So that's something to celebrate. And, uh, you know, I thank Ms. Adair, you know, when she, she had a vision, when she saw that, uh, we need to audit some transcripts. She's kind of put that in motion, that auditing process. And now everybody's eye is on the prize, making certain that everybody is doing what they're supposed to be doing, that every, those grades are on a transcript posted like they're supposed to be, so that we get credit for it. But Ms. Rita, constantly, constantly checking in on those principals, checking in on those guidance counselors, and making certain that the reporting is accurate. Because a lot of the reason, guys, perhaps some of the reason for us not being where we should have been is reporting errors. And the keen eye of Rita McLean picked up on that. And she's been coaching everybody else. Our guidance counselors, guidance counselors doing a phenomenal job of keeping those transcripts, uh, in order. Have audit coming up. They've already done audits of the senior records, I believe. Is that correct, Mrs. Adair? And we're about to begin eleventh, tenth, and ninth audits. Principals, you guys, you're the ones who are right there on the spot. And some of you are, you got your thumb on every piece of data, as you should. And you've responded to the coaching and the training of Ms. Adair, Ms. Donna Ash, Ms. Rita McLean, and like Ms. Ash says, teamwork. Make the dream work. So thank you all for that.
Thank you. Next item on our agenda is going to be our presentation from Ms. Donna Ash.
Will not be before you too long. All right. So if we just move to the first slide. This, uh, first is just an overview of what you're getting ready to see. So we're just going to look at Dibbles. Overview of Star Reading, Star Math, Scantron Reading, that's a high school, ninth through twelve. And then Scantron Math is ninth through twelve as well. Next slide. Okay, so I've explained this particular chart before to the board. And we have individual school breakdowns. So if you're ever interested in that, please let me know. But I just wanted to do an overview, so it's brief this evening with everyone, so we can get home. Uh, so the first thing that we're going to look at at the top is our kindergarten data. So if you look at this chart, what it tells us is where students began the year, from the beginning of the year to the middle of the year, where they went. So if you look at the top, one of the things that, um, just is phenomenal is what we've done with the students in the past. I've been concerned that we're losing students. So for all of kindergarten, first and second grade, if you're looking at kindergarten, we began the year with one hundred and fifteen students at core. That's far right. One hundred and fifteen students. So we looked at those same one hundred and fifteen students at the middle, at the middle of the year, back in December. And I know people are like, well, yeah, they should have stayed the same. What I need you to understand though is that the bar keeps getting raised. So let's just say they needed ninety at the beginning of the year to be core. Well, at the middle of the year, they need a hundred and fifty to be core. So that's a big accomplishment that they're still there, that we're not losing students. So we did lose one to strategic, and we know what happened. We're strategic about getting them back. Uh, and that's as a district as a whole. For the fifteen, fifty-four students that came in at strategic, meaning they needed a little help, we moved forty-seven students to core. That's on level. Six of those students were still remained at strategic, and one of them we had, uh, to move back. And again, we always have a plan, because we're looking at the data. Of the forty-two students that came to us in kindergarten that were, uh, not, that they were needing, they were needing that extra help, of those forty-two students, we didn't just move them to strategic. They moved, out of forty-two, thirty-five of them moved all the way to core. They skipped that whole middle and moved. Our kindergarten teachers are doing some phenomenal work. We had two to move to strategic, and we still have five students that are struggling. And some of those are really severe students. So we just have to try some different interventions. So the same thing, as you can see, the data is pretty similar as you move down with us seeing. Now, the one thing about the first grade that I want to add, I just, you just have to look at this first grade data. Because I really believe, and what the data is showing, what we saw in the first grade is a result of what kindergarten did last year. And what has happened differently than in the past? In the past, our kindergarten data has looked good, but then they get to us in the first grade, and it's like, what happened? What practices and processes that were put in place last year? Those students, it stuck with them. So it wasn't just we did good enough to pass the test. We really learned to the total of, look at these, just the totals. One hundred and seventy-nine of our kindergartners, one hundred and seventy-nine came in at core this year, y'all. That is some work. Nine came in at strategic, and only five came in at your, that, that, that critical, intensive, needing that support. Y'all, that is phenomenal. That is phenomenal. So, and then first grade was our grade when we looked at that was struggling. We're still working, so those students, of course, went on to the second grade. Now, you can see that data as well. I won't go through it, but I just wanted to make sure we understood it enough to be able to read it. And then we also understand that there's a work to be done. Because what this data is showing, if that pattern continues, then we will have students sitting in the tenth grade that are on tenth grade level. This is where we begin to lose students. So that's why I'm so excited, because I told the board before, I know that our data on the right end doesn't look as well as we want it to. But if the foundation on the house is messed up, it doesn't matter how pretty you try to make the rest of it look, the foundation is messed up. So we put our eggs in the right basket, and of course, the state believes the same thing. And for those of you that are here, it may not have occurred, we've got a new literacy law, a new unfunded mandate. Uh, and so our first graders, uh, our current first graders, when they get to the third grade, if they're not proficient, they'll be held back by state law. By state law. So it is very important that we keep our eye on the prize and make sure that we're doing the things. And the data is showing that we are doing the things that need to be done. And we're going to do some additional with these first graders in the summer. So if you have students, or if you know someone whose child is struggling, definitely at that first grade level, uh, we, the money we have been able to put together, even though the law didn't pass for the summer and money had been allocated, we have put something together so that we can provide summer camp this summer for our struggling students. So, uh, that's something that we're doing. So, next slide. Or any questions about the Dibbles data? Okay, next slide. There are two things going on, um, and I just want to reiterate, we have proficiency and we have growth. And so I put this little graphic here. If everybody was at the same start line, and everybody ran an average race, then everybody would finish at about the same time. If we all begin at the start, and we all run an average race, then yes, we are all expected to get to that finish line within a timely manner. The issue is student B over there to the left, they're running their heart out just to try to get to the start line. But that's what it's going to take. So the issue, I know, because people are saying, well, we're doing so well, but yes. When the report card came out, yeah, we still only have twenty-five point seven percent proficiency. It matters. And in reading, twenty-eight point six-six percent proficiency. That, that's the percentage of students that are proficient. And you, that's what keeps me up at night. That's, that's, that is the finish line. That's the proficiency. But here's the issue. I have students that hadn't even got to the start line yet. We've got to get them to the start line. I can't go and try to fix proficiency. If they're not even on the map, they're not even in the game yet. They're not even in the race yet. So that's why we have the sixty-five SGP. It's an apples-to-apples comparison. So when people say, well, that's the line you want everybody to... No, no, no. Because we're comparing other students just like those students. And so every student in our district, our goal district-wide for everybody is a sixty-five SGP. Why? Because again, approximately seventy-five percent of our students are not proficient. That means approximately seventy-five percent aren't at the start line. So we have to get them to do triple overtime to get them there, so that we can get them on the path of proficiency. So I just wanted to explain that to people, because you hear two different pieces of data. And then people are like, Ms. Ash, I thought you said we were doing well. We are. We are growing. Our growth from last year in reading and math was ten percent growth above both reading and math. Uh, you can look at the actual data. I actually looked it up. I have it on sticky note to make sure I was telling you the truth. It is. In math, it went from eighty-nine point, well, in reading, it went from eighty-nine point ten, uh, seventy-nine point zero one percent to eighty-nine point ten percent. And in reading, it went from seventy-seven point five, uh, math, it went from seventy-seven point five to in math, eighty-nine point twelve. So the growth is happening, and it's phenomenal. And if we continue to grow at that rate, then our students can get at the start line, and then we can catch up. But one of the issues that we have to be careful of in this moment is that we don't lose the students that are already at the start line by trying to catch these up. Yeah, I know. But those twenty-five percent, they deserve that too. So we're doing a lot of work. Our teachers are doing... I, I, they, they think I'm crazy some days, but they, they're still with me. They still, they still call when we come to the school. Because the work is, it's, it's not easy. It's not an easy work to do, but it's the work that has to be done if we ever want our school, not just the school district, but the community of Greenville to come up. Education is power. So if we expect growth, then we have to grow our students. So, that being said, I want us to look at the next chart. Remember, sixty-five SGP is above average growth. This first chart is, and, and it's not showing up as well for everybody in the room. But this first chart is Global Scholar Scantron Express data. It's for both reading and math. This is our high school data. High school's a little bit in shock, so some of the data, we got some data missing in some places. We got, you know, but this was a first round for high school. High school has not had a universal screener to see if they're making growth as well. But everybody has to make growth, even though that has not been the emphasis. So what you'll see is what the actual Scantron Express reported. And then I went through, because it's hard, because they send a report out based on the end of the year to say how many people have met, met the growth target for the year. And this is the middle of the year. So what I did was, I went back in and recalculated it and cut that annual target in half to see how many people have made that half. So that's what you see in the blue below that, is how many have made. I don't have any comparison data from last year at this time, because this is the first time the high school has done this. So it's a beginning. So I just wanted to report to you so you could see and understand kind of what the high school is looking at. Any questions there? And there is a discrepancy in the reading and the math. Like I said, we're missing some data. Uh, believe it or not, high school students really don't care as much about their data. Uh, but, uh, we're, we're getting there. Okay? Any questions about that? Oh, all right, next slide. Okay, so this is one of my favorite charts from Renaissance, as we talk about growth and proficiency. If you see along the bottom of the chart, you see growth. If you see along the left side of the chart, you see proficient. So what you want this data to look like is to the right and up. Okay? So right now, what we have is middle, which is not bad. But remember, if seventy-five percent of the students are, are not proficient, then the growth needs to be phenomenal. So that's why sixty-five. So if our district is supposed to be sixty-five, if everybody's supposed to be aiming for sixty-five, this data should be farther to the right than it is. But it is what it is, and that's the data, and that's how I report what I'm seeing. And then as you go higher, of course, that's how proficient students are. This is based on Star. Okay? So this is based on our Star, but it's a comparison to the ACT Aspire, which should be similar to anything that the state brings out, because it's an apples-to-apples match with the standards, and not like Global Scholar, which is just like, sometimes they didn't even test on the grade level. But yeah, it is the same proficiency test, but, you know. Uh, that's me to here, nor there, moving on. So the next screen actually shows which schools are those particular dots. So it shows you the school's proficiency at this point. This is math first. This is at this point in the year. This is a projected proficiency for each school, and it gives their SGP. What you want to see is, the lower the proficiency is, the higher the SGP needs to be, because it needs to move up. That's just the bottom line. But I've broken it down for you there. If you have any questions, you know, you can ask me, of course, feel free to. Or you can always ask the individual schools, but the data is before you, if you have any questions here. Okay, next slide. This is the same thing, but in reading. I just, I didn't do the whole thing again. I just wanted to take an opportunity to explain the dots first. But this is the same exact information, but for reading. The bottom line is, again, we are growing. But again, I don't want the community, or the schools, or myself to get complacent with the fact that, oh, we're growing. Because I still see that it's only twenty-five percent. It's only twenty-seven percent. That, that's not okay. Because children are graduating. They, that's, that's not okay. So that's what keeps me fueled and keeps me going. And that's why the growth is important, and that's why we're going to continue to grow. But I need people to understand both sides of it. We can't afford to just say, well, we're doing better, right? Yes, we are. And do we want to celebrate that success? Yes, we do. Because growing ten percent is not an easy job. That took hands-on deck. That took people sitting in data meetings. That took teachers looking strategically at how to divide this, how to put these students in this group. It took everybody working together. So I never want to take that away from schools, because we're doing the work, but sometimes it doesn't show up. And then people are like, well, but, but, but look at that. Oh, but you went. We worked, you've already seen my plan. We've got some other plans, because, believe it or not, I do know that discipline does have an effect on this. I do know that the culture of the school has an effect. I do know that mental health is real. And it's hard to teach a class when somebody's flipping around on the floor, and you can't calm them down. I get that. So the plan has to encompass all of that. But the main thing is teaching and learning. Because if we get everything else right, but we don't get this right, then we might as well close the doors. We're doing a great job. We just got to stay the course, and I appreciate everything that y'all are doing. And I appreciate the support that the board has given us to do the work. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ash. Item seven is our report fundraising drives and requests for youth school classes. This is an informational item. So we'll move on to the financial report, item eight. Approval of the financial reports.
And this is mostly has a brief report to present following the approval process. I recommend approval of financial statements for October and November two thousand and nineteen, and a reconciling state for October and November two thousand and nineteen.
Okay, we have a recommendation from the superintendent for approval of the October and November financial statements and the October and November reconciling statements. May I have a motion?
Motion, second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The votes is nay. And then item nine, permission to advertise for BS, and we have two.
Well, I just wanted to give a brief update.
I'm sorry.
You're fine, you were fine. No. Uh, next month, we'll do the quarterly update. But I just wanted to update y'all, since I haven't been here since October, to present the end of fiscal year. But for October two thousand and nineteen, our AP expenditures were five hundred thousand, three hundred and sixty dollars and ninety-three cents. The gross payroll was one point nine million. The AD general fund balance in October was one point eight-nine million, which is point nine five months of operations. And then the net operations year-to-date was one point nine million. And then for November, since we didn't begin December, I'm presenting two months, the accounts payroll expenditures were three hundred and eighty-six thousand, four hundred and six dollars and fifty-two cents. The gross payroll was one point nine million. The AD general fund balance was one point seven million, was shot a little bit from October. Um, it was point eight eight months of operations. And then the net operations year-to-date is three point eight million. And the next slide shows our AD... And the next slide shows our AD fund balance, and I'm not presenting December until next month, but I went ahead and included the AD fund balance for December. Um, and you can see that it increases at two, a little over two million, which is one point zero four months of operations. And so as, you know, um, more avalanche collections come in, our, it'll, it'll grow a little bit. The next slide is our one-six sales tax analysis, and from, um, the sales tax collections from the first three months of the fiscal year are down by one point eight-five percent compared to October through December of last year. And the next chart is just a graph that just shows, um, the collections coming in from month to month. You can see it's pretty much follows a trend. The next slide is our property tax analysis, and, um, October through November twenty nineteen collections are down by thirteen point nine percent. That doesn't necessarily mean that it's going to be down. It's just maybe people are a little slow about paying compared to last year, so. And then, um, the last slide is hopefully next month, I'll have budget amendments presented to the board, and then the first one. No questions?
All right. Thank you. Sorry about that. Okay, so then we'll move on then to the permission for advertising for BIS.
I recommend that permission be granted to advertise for BIS for priors for the CMT program and the roof replacements unless it repairs at Greenville High School.
Okay. So we have, um, two items here for advertising for BIS. Um, let's get a motion, and then I'll see if there's any discussion on those.
Motion, second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Um, do we have any questions or discussion concerning those items? The priors or the roof repairs?
Yeah, the roof is, I assume this is going to go to a membrane or something, so the car, it is.
Yeah, because we just spent money over there.
I always want to clarify, we just replaced the pitched roof part and the shingle. We did not.
Correct. We did not, in that construction or that project, they did not address the flat roof over the cafeteria area as well as over the concession area.
Okay. Oh, okay, so that's not the part that we repaired.
Now, the current flat roof that is leaking and causing the damages that I see you, uh, in photographs, uh, it is flat, it's tarred. You know, why, why people thought the flat roofs were a good idea, I don't know, but, you know, it clearly doesn't work.
Well, the tar doesn't work. It's some tar that, when it heats up, it expands in the tracks and it, and it leaks, and it, that's why membrane is, well, shriveled.
It's absolutely, apparently.
They did a membrane work recently, and, yeah, it's a little much better.
It's commonly advised to ask or say that, but, you know, many people may do that, that, how many girls do I have? I don't think it's, um, because it might be very, so it's, certainly extra money that, 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 that.
And the priors, there's an impression about that. We're talking about three, uh, three school cafeterias, uh, and begin and then will expand into Georgia, Gianna, and Greenville High. Is that correct?
Georgia, Greer High.
Okay. Yes.
All right, any other discussions or questions? Okay, so we have a motion and a second. All in favor, um, of giving permission to advertise for BIS, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, opposes nay. All right. Permission there granted, and then next item is approval of bid results, child nutrition program equipment.
I recommend approval of the low bid for CMT equipment from Bresco in the amount of thirty-two thousand, eight hundred and eighty-eight dollars. This is for school skillets at Greenville Middle School and a double convection oven for W Palmer Elementary School.
Okay, looking at the results, there were, there was no bids submitted on, from two companies, and the bid that, uh, we received for Bresco and Hall are very close. And of course, we're going for the lower one. Okay, so we have a recommendation for, um, permission to proceed with, I'm sorry, the approval of the bid results, and so, um, that would be for Bresco, thirty-two thousand, eight hundred and eighty-eight dollars. So may I have a motion?
Second.
Okay. Are there any questions? All in favor, say aye. Opposes nay. Next item is permission to proceed with development of school system strategic plan.
And for aye, my recommendation is our current strategic plan, which was under expired December two thousand nineteen. I don't mean that we don't have a plan. We have a plan, okay? Uh, and we're not going to just put aside focus areas that we've been focusing on for the past two and a half, nearly three years because clearly from the J and G scene, those things are working. But it's time to create a new focus area, new focus, a new strategic plan for the next five years. So I do recommend that you grant us permission to proceed with the development of the school system strategic plan.
All right, so we have a recommendation from the superintendent to proceed with the development of the strategic plan. Uh, I would like to call attention to the board on the strategic timeline. March nineteenth, there is a whole board training session, and I need you to check your calendars on that to, to make sure.
And I do believe there, we've been working on some, uh, other dates and possibilities. Miss Ash has been, uh, conversations with Dr. Harrison, uh, so there may be other options. Because it's a four-hour training, we find it work with him and help him compress it to forty-five, or maybe three hours.
Not two hours?
The train is what, what?
Ma'am?
The train is four.
It's, so you, you have a role and understand your, your role in the creation of that strategic plan.
Okay, I'm sorry.
I know. Because this is a, it's perfect timing because remember, we're approaching the accreditation process for advanced ed. Dr. Harrison directs, so the fact that these two things are coming together at the same time is pretty good for us. That we can create it and align it with advanced ed as we're moving forward and align it to meet our needs.
We're there the week is March nine. This is four hours?
Right.
Uh, we're shooting through, that's what, we're looking for alternate dates because I believe in, in my equation, the board's a regular board meeting day. So we're looking at other options. This schedule that you have is tentative, but matter of fact, it's already changed. So you'll be getting an amended, uh, proposal in regards to timeline.
Okay. He actually said it was a whole day training, but I want to make, I'm sorry. He actually said it was a whole day training because it, uh, has a, a SWOT analysis. Uh, just, there's a lot that it entails, so we were trying to get it to, to, two, three hour, a three-hour training. So I just wanted to just kind of, you know, a whole day condensed to a three hour.
Right. Okay, so we have a recommendation, um, and motion. All in favor of proceeding with that, uh, development, aye?
Aye.
We have, we had motion, didn't we? Okay, well, let's back up then. We have a recommendation. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye. Oppose is nay. Okay, and we're looking at the timeline of this, those days. Okay. All right, and then item twelve is approval of policy revisions.
I recommend approval of the policy revisions for the student health services, set administration of medications and child nutrition. Nutrition program equipment, supplies, materials, vehicles, and sub-plate. These revisions have been reviewed by the board policy committee, and they've been updated to reflect current state guidelines and regulations. So it's not something that we just decided to create. State says fix this, create a policy for fix current policy that he has. So all of these things have been done, brought before the policy committee for approval, and you stick the results in the paper.
All right, thank you. So we have a recommendation for approval of those policy revisions. May I have a motion?
Motion, second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye. Oppose is nay. Okay, item thirteen is approval of the school calendar for twenty-twenty, uh, and twenty-twenty-one, and also for twenty-twenty-one and twenty-twenty-two.
I recommend approval of the school calendar for twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one school year, twenty-twenty-one and twenty-twenty-two school year. These have been reviewed by the board policy committee. Employees were allowed to vote on two options for each of the years, and the calendar, uh, presented received over eighty percent of the total votes that were cast.
With a hundred and thirty-five response.
Right.
Okay. So, uh, board members, if you had a chance to look at both of those calendars, you have a recommendation for approval, is there a motion?
I'm going to move. Second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you.
Discussion.
I hate these calendars, y'all. And I, I want to tell you, I know they're voted on by the teachers. I understand this. This comes from being a parent. Starting school August sixth is too early.
Too early.
And we are spending a fortune trying to cool buildings in, in August. And the problem is, we really can't because those doors are opened up so much, and yet we are starting school the first Thursday of August. And it was from a financial standpoint, it goes, that would be the warm-up part, and parent part of, I got to keep kids back in school and back going. As hot as it is, we're putting kids on school buses without air conditioners because we don't, everyone's spending money to air condit, to, to buy an air-conditioned bus because there's a whole bunch of reasons. But they rotate buses every ten years or so. Somebody's going to be without an air-conditioned bus for a while. So we hear that. School starts first of August. I hear so many teachers and educators who vote on this, that then we get up there for open house that first week, and they're like, "Oh, it's just too early to be here. It's too early to be here. It's too hot." Yet this gets voted on. And I look, and, and we take a week out for Thanksgiving, which, which is great, but is it actually necessary? We take a fall break. I'm looking at the twenty-twenty-one calendar of the ninth of October. Uh, and, and then I know we have these, these workdays. We take out the fourth of January instead of coming back on Monday. Uh, we get out May twenty-fifth, and I'm just sitting there looking at these days. If you took away just the fall break day or the night, you get out on Wednesday, like it was years ago for Thanksgiving, come back on Monday after the first, you push school starting back at least to the thirteenth of August. And then if you go in and you look at moving our last day, and I'm just using this first one, to the last, because we get out on Tuesday in May. It's just a weird, finish the weekend to, to the twenty-eighth. By doing that, you push it from roughly thirteen to, to another three calendar days, and then, and now I think total year around starting August ninth. And, you know, and the same is roughly true for the next year. But we're sending kids up there in hot buildings, gymnasiums that have no air conditioners. And buses, and it is hot. And we've got little kids, you know, we've got older kids, maybe they're better with it. And this, I hate it. We've been doing this for the last couple of years, starting around that first Thursday. And I, I, and everybody now is like, it's great because we get out of school mid-May, twenty-twenty-first. It's voted on in December, and it's like, hey, we get out then. But then August comes, and everybody's complaining about having to start in August. But then I'm like, you voted, the majority of you voted, just start that early in August. It, it's a lose-lose. And for parents and for the kids, the, the power bill we're running, we could save an extra ten days without having to, it's a cool up on that area. I just hate, I, I, I don't know how to express it anymore. That's, that's all I have to say.
Well, I, and I did want to say on that, your point is well-taken. The only thing I'm looking at is, the only way we could do it is, as you said, we have to take some of the days out, some of the holidays out. Because if you push it at the end, you're going to the month of June where it's just as hot in June as it is in August pretty much. So you would have to take out some of those, uh, some of the holidays in order to keep from pushing it too far out.
You take out some of the holidays, and we're still not into June, and we're out until Memorial Day. And it's still cooler at the end of May than it is in the first, second week of August by the time we deep into those summer months in South Alabama.
May I have? Mr. President, when, when the calendar goes out, the options that are sent out to the faculty, uh, are we including a later start date in August? Do they have the option?
No, no.
Okay, because I'm thinking that they, I'm saying, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm thinking that they are not seeing a later start date. The start dates that we are sending out are all early start dates, so they're not being given the opportunity to look at it from that perspective and to decide on a later start date. Is that, is that what we? So I think maybe we need to run.
At the same time, you only have a handful of votes, too.
I understand that.
You only have a handful of votes.
Twenty-five percent or something?
Or the number of people we have in the district.
Twenty-five.
Yes.
So we can say if you don't have a two.
And you know, for those who, you don't vote, what you get is, if you're apathetic in voting, as in any type, any type of situation, if you're apathetic in voting, then what you get is what you get because you didn't participate.
I, I, perhaps we should have done it.
Can I give a little different perspective? I don't care if it actually likes the earlier start date. I, I actually love them because I'll tell you why. My kids are involved in band and other sporting events, and if, um, you talk about the gymnasium being hot, you talk about other places. But if, if we don't start school early, guess where the football players are in the middle of the day? And if you think that's hot in the middle of the day, come with my daughters to practice band on asphalt in the parking lot at Greenville High School. So if we actually do have school, the practices are after school when it's a lot cooler and it's a lot easier in those, and so you got one or two choices there. My kids are going to be there because they're involved in activities. They're going to be there at school in August, the beginning of August regardless. It's not going to matter. We might as well go ahead and have school and have them have it a later time where it is cooler than.
I, I understand that because mine are not, except band practice, it is hot on that asphalt.
Go out there and watch how many band members are out on that asphalt before school, and then that's where they're practicing, and they're doing it in the middle of the day. And, um, you know, that's, that's when the time is, and, and it is cooler after school. So I, you know, for someone who played sports and then who has kids that are active and thinks, you know, the school's starting, my kids are going to be there, and I was there early anyway.
Let me say this, one reason that, in regards to revisit, there's a cer, a little transition, a major transition going on across the state in regards to our information system and our computer system and everything. in regards to our information system and our computer system and everything. Our school is now taking over and we had to have calendars in place. So it's crit, it was critical that we did what we did when we did it especially. And we, you know, going back with the drilling, throw a major key to that.
I just say one thing, it's four hundred something employees. If you sent out a survey, you would get four hundred different calendars. We're not gonna leave everybody all the time. But if you have a calendar in place, as far as I'm concerned as a parent, I can plan everything I need to do. And have it in place. These two calendars are gonna give me vacation with my full family at the beach. Last year it wasn't. But they're all gonna be there because we can plan that. If we, if we have them, like I say, if you got four hundred different employees, you're not gonna leave everybody there. If you take away two days in Thanksgiving, they're gonna complain about that, because they wanna travel and go spend time with the family Thanksgiving. If you reduce Christmas holidays, they're gonna complain about that. If you take away part of the days for spring break, they're gonna complain about that.
And we, and we can make sure for school year by adding about twelve, fourteen minutes. I, I looked at the study when we had a seminar, that would shave about two weeks by adding twelve, fourteen minutes of class time. And then everybody will complain about that too.
Everybody in the room is gonna be thankful for that one little purple thing, y'all can't see it on, I said, there's one little purple thing, oh, April thirtieth. It's called that one thing, yeah.
I need to mention that.
I hope we don't let you use that one, yeah.
All right, so we had our discussion. Did we want to go ahead and have a motion? Uh, well, we actually had a motion and a second on it, so.
Right.
Someone's wanted to back up on it, so I am gonna go ahead and take a vote on it, all in favor of approving these two calendars, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose is nay.
Nay.
All right, we have a question, and thank you for that. Okay, item fourteen is our personnel report and, um, oh, go ahead.
Madam President, I recommend approval of the personnel report for January two thousand, January sixteen, two thousand and twenty, as you have in your packet.
Okay, before I actually take a motion and second on that, I just want to say that this is, um, the first time I have been on the board and had a situation where we're approving a resignation, um, of Ms. Jean Harden. Who actually resigned December thirty-first and has since passed away, is being funeralized on tomorrow. And so that's, um, it's pretty sad when I look at personnel report to approve her resignation and she is deceased. And I just wanted to make mention of that. Um, there was some extended illness there and, um, she barely got out of the school system, so. Again, as Mr. Sellers said at the outset, please keep the family in your prayers. So we do have, um, the personnel report before us, and we have a recommendation for approval, is there a motion?
Make a motion. Second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose is nay. Item fifteen, um.
Then we do have.
Uh, do we have some?
We do have, um.
We have one.
Okay, great.
I think we have two.
All right.
Or is it Ms. Miller here? All right, Ms. Katie Miller, uh, of course, was supposed to be here, couldn't make it, but exiles LA, Grace, would you please stand? Grace is a product of this system, a product of AmeriCorps and a mentee of Ms. Jean Harden. And, uh, she will be stepping into that role and we appreciate it, and we for just great things. Mallory Bright. Mallory is our new nurse.
Welcome to you all, thank you so very much for being a part of our system. Item fifteen is the date and location of our February board meeting and, um, our recommendation, well, actually. Uh, typically, we take our board meeting to, um, south to Georgiana. So are you all okay with that?
That's right, yes.
Um, Ms. Benson?
Ms. Benson will have it.
Is that all right with you?
Yeah, we can, we can, I'm glad of having you.
All right. So I don't see where we actually need a motion on it, so then our next meeting in February will be held, uh, in Georgiana. Thank you, Ms. Benson. Item sixteen, our legal update, Mr. Hamilton.
As most of you know, we've been kind of scheduling things. Um, next week, Wednesday, Thursday and Friday. Your deposition will be taken by the plaintiff's lawyers in the case of Reston Brothers versus Word of Education. One day, um. Lois, Brandon and I think Linda will be pet. Um, and I'm, whether or not I get to you and you, Michael and Nikki, on Monday. I'd, I'd like to all do it one day, because lawyers doing all that stuff is gonna be very long. Maybe we can do that. I understand Nikki has some issues of afternoon, so that's okay. Um, you know, I'll handle that, I'll do it Tuesday. Uh, and then, uh, Wednesday. Um, Brandon will be proposed and then Nikki and, and Michael will be done Thursday and Lois and Linda on Friday. Here.
And Monday?
That's in the conference room, not in our, as I do.
Yeah, it'll be there here because I think you're sort of closed for.
I think it's, well, are we here Monday?
Uh, yes. I, you can be open, if you're open, if not, you'll do it at my office.
I'll open my, no.
So what time do you, what's your office? Oh, wonderful. But, but that's, you know, as you all know, those issues are alleging discriminatory and retaliation and all those things, so.
Hey, I get some standard.
Other than I'm listening to the almond grove's.
Would you forget this one?
That's the year.
Thank you so much. All right.
Any questions, I, I, I'm, I'm, you know.
How, how late Monday are you going to, if you want to stay?
Um, it's really isn't gonna be. I, I understand what your issue is, so. If you can't do it Tuesday, I, I'll, I'll stay there.
I can be back to groove by five o'clock, but.
That's fine. But, but you just check to be able to wear and make sure that it's okay and.
I wish you won't have to come back.
That's fine with me.
Okay.
I, I can do that, that's.
Why do the odds never quit?
Thank you. And our next item on the agenda is in second session.
Madam President, I recommend approval of, obviously, due to the fact that we are in a session, uh, at this time of the day, this disciplinary matter. The session that did not take longer than about fifteen minutes.
Okay, recommendation for today's session, is there a motion?
Motion, second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The little girl on the floor today's session, hopefully about thirty minutes.